For today, we will have invocation by Mr. Wilkinson and then the pledge of two flags. Join us.
Dear Father, Lord, we come to you saying thank you for all that you have done and all that you will. Father, we ask your guidance in these liberations, Father, that we may do your will. Lord, continue to bless the staff, the students of CTC, continue to be with them and guide them, Father. And we also ask that, Father, that you continue to, should we just pray for understanding and guidance, Father, and continue to bless Sergeant First Class McKenzie's family, Father. We know that they lost a security officer here. We bless a special prayer for his family, for their family, continue to be with them. Lord, continue to guide us is our prayer. Jesus' name. Amen.
Follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice drawn.
Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag.
Our pledge of allegiance is Texas.
One nation under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, sir.
Before we get into the agenda, just a personal note, previously announced workshop for next week was to be on Tuesday, has been moved to Thursday. We'll address that at the end of the agenda, but just some of you slip out during sometimes, and so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of a change in schedule. Opportunity for members of the public, I'm sorry, board meeting, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board, anyone present wishing to take advantage of that opportunity. Hearing none, seeing none, it's time for the chancellor's update.
Thank you, sir. Last month, I attended the annual CCME symposium, and while there were several topics of discussion, the hot button, as it has been for the last several years, is the $250 tuition assistance cap. And as much discussion as there was, there was no movement on that and no indication that it would change anytime soon. In addition to the TA cap, there was discussion on the new DoD MOU renewal process and the compliance, the compliance report that's required every two years. And we are up for renewal. The government has streamlined the process, which is really good. It's in beta right now. However, that takes place next year. Our renewal takes place in a few months, so we will have to renew under the current process, which is okay, because this is our third iteration. And so I'd like to think we know what we're doing. Also, I participated, as I mentioned, during the last meeting that I did participating in the president's panel. And so that was a wonderful opportunity, a little nerve wracking. I was up there with a couple of other presidents from four-year universities. But it was a really good panel discussion. We touched on the tuition cap again, because the question centered around what we're doing for soldiers and service members and their families on our campus and our veterans, but also how we are managing some of the challenges, being the cap, but also Chapter 35, which impacts veterans significantly in that there is at least a 30-day delay sometimes for the stipend, and they rely on that to support their living expenses. So it was really good. Overall, it was good. As I was sharing at lunch, the senior enlisted advisor to the chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff just asked it as academic institutions that we continue to support a positive narrative surrounding the military, the noble mission of our military and serving our country, particularly during this time, especially with recruitment down, recruitment is down as well as retention. So overall, it was a really good, really good symposium. So thank you for allowing me to attend.
Thank you. Gerald, you have a report.
Yes, sir. We had the tax comment reinvestment zone, Ters number two, update last Thursday. Put that in your read ahead package. Basically, again, from the Fordhood Street down to 38th Street, the project, and I've got some more details here if you want to pass around and look at it. Those are three different sections of the road, three different views of what it would look like from 38th Street all the way up to Fordhood Road. And the city's going to move forward with that. The first phase will be, of course, moving the utilities underground and getting access right away, buying what properties they need to make the improvements go. So it's still on track.
Thank you for keeping us updated, ma'am. Mr. Armson, come speak to us about House Bill Eight.
Did everybody receive, you should have received two items. One was, one was provided in your packet. That's the two-page one. And then the other one are some slides. So the slides go into a little bit more detail, and that's really what I wanted to go ahead and focus on, and it builds off of the handouts that you had received in your packet. So House Bill Eight was passed this past summer as a part of the 88th legislative session. Funding for community colleges has changed. It is now a dynamic formula that's based on student outcomes as opposed to a more stat or a more static model, which was based on contact hour funding. It aligns with the state higher education goals along with state and regional workforce needs. There are two tiers, base tier and performance tier. I'm going to talk about each of those in just a moment, and then funding will be recalculated on an annual basis. Funding going forward, we were notified by the coordinating board that that will occur based upon projections, and then there will be a reconciliation at the end of the year based upon what actually happens. So this is just a very simple model of where the funding model is going. You can see the majority of the funding there on the left side was contact hours, then you have cooperation success points. The new model, the majority of the funding is around the performance tier, and then there is a little bit of funding for certain colleges on the base tier. And I'll get on, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So some of the key components of House Bill Eight includes FAST, the financial aid for swift transfer. Those basically allow anybody, any student who's educationally disadvantaged allows them to take dual credit classes at no cost to them, which would include books, fees, and other course material. You have a shared services component, which basically encourages community colleges to work together in various partnerships. You have the performance tier, you have the base tier, and then you have the community college advisory committee, which basically provides guidance or advice and counsel to the coordinating board during this period. Okay, so to get into a little bit more of the details around the base tier funding, I'm gonna, there's gonna be a number of slides, and I'm gonna break this down. I just want to make sure that you guys have a very good idea about where some of the numbers are coming from. So base tier funding is available to colleges only under certain situations. If the instructional operations outweigh the local revenue share. So you can see the total of instruction and operations total, 21.2 million compared to local share total, 21.3 million. Because our local share total exceeds the instructional and operational one, we get no base funding. The other criteria would be that if your full-time student equivalents were less than 5,000, ours exceed that. And so for us, at least this past fiscal year, we were not eligible for any type of base tier funding. That could change in the future. If it turns out that the instructional and operational total exceeds the local share, then, you know, we may be eligible at that point for some additional base tier funding. Okay, so to break down each of the components there, so the basic allotment funding, basically what they're doing is they're looking at full-time student equivalents, and I'm not sure why. Sorry. So they're basically looking at full-time student equivalents, and then they're breaking it down and giving weighted averages for three categories. Academically disadvantaged, which are students that are eligible for Pell Grants, economically disadvantaged students that are not TSI-ready, and then adult learners, those are students that are 25 years of age or older. So they add your full-time student equivalents, they add the weights into it, you get a total number, which is the 8385. That's the weighted full-time student equivalents. And then they have a basic allotment that is across the board for all community colleges, which is the 1275. Just simple math, you go ahead and multiply those together, and that gives you your basic allotment of $10,691,134. And so you can see that off to the left. Contact hour funding is the second piece of the model. And I know this is a small, that's why we have the handouts there, but you can see where they look at each of the different types of programs. So you have your academic, your academic development, you have your technical, et cetera. So they basically look at what are the contact hours, and then each one of those areas has an actual rate. All they do is just multiply it all the way across, and so you get a total dollar amount for contact hour funding. In this case, it was $10,567,263. And this is specific for Central Texas College, and they do this for each of the colleges separately. So all they did then was just added the two numbers together, your basic allotment of 10.6, contact hour of 10.5, which got the total of 21.2 for your instructional and operational dollars there. So now let me, I'm gonna jump to the other side of the equation. So they look at your tuition and fees estimate. So you've got it broken down into two categories, your non-dual credit student. And again, this is a state identified dollar amount per full-time student equivalent of 2828. And then you have your dual credit, which they're calculating based upon the participation in FAST, which is where we get the $55. So they just take the full-time student equivalents times the dollar amount, that gets added up, and so that's the estimate that they came up with for our total tuition and fees. Then you have the local tax estimate, where they look at the fiscal year '22 taxes collected, the tax rate at that particular time. And then what they do is they try to level set against all colleges throughout Texas, and so they look at the amount of taxes that are collected, basically for one, you know, one cent. And then they go ahead and say, well, let's adjust it again to five cents. And when you go ahead and make that calculation for us, that was $6,204,385. So on the, on the equation, it's basically just adding the tuition and fees, your local tax estimate for the total of the $21,381. I didn't know all the graphics we're gonna do all this. And so, as you can see, the instruction and operations was less than the total share, so our base funding is zero. Again, this may be recalculated on an annual basis. We will have to wait and see, but at least as for the current fiscal year, it was, it was zero. So a few additional things regarding performance tier funding. It's based upon fundable outcomes. And so those would include the completion of 15 semester credit hours of dual credit, transferred to a four-year public institution, university with 15 semester credit hours, or the completion of an academic or workforce credential. That can be a degree, could be a credential. So that is how they are, they are funding. And then, as I mentioned, and you saw on the formula, there is some additional funding based upon the weighted student characteristics. I'd mentioned economically disadvantaged, academically disadvantaged, and then adult learners. So we do, on select programs like nursing, I think we do have quite a few adult learners. So that certainly is an advantage to us, because we get 50% additional funding when that occurs. And then they're essentially funding based upon value, credentials of value in high-demand fields are funded at a slightly higher rate as well. So they're really wanting to make sure that we are aligning with the state initiatives and where the jobs are going to be in the future. So this here is, it's a busy slide, but wanted to go ahead and at least show you the breakdown and the dollar amount that the state awards us for each of those performance areas. So you can see, for instance, the 15 semester credit hours for dual credit. For each dual credit student who achieves 15 semester credit hours, the college receives $1,700 for each of those students. So for us, that equated to just over a million dollars. And then you can see where you have an individual who transfers with 15 semester credit hours. That's worth $3,500. You can see the total amount. And then it just goes on as they have it broken down. And you can see that, for instance, look at the occupational skills award, which is on the lower left-hand side. For a student who receives that particular award, it's $750. But if they get an occupational skills award in a high-demand field, it then increases to $1,000. So there's certainly an incentive for schools to be able to offer credentials and degrees within high-demand fields. So our state appropriations for this past year was just under $16 million, $15,939,954. I'm gonna jump into FAST now, because it is a component of House Bill Eight, actually a fairly significant piece. It's a major emphasis on the state and provide, the state provides the opportunity for dual-credit students to receive low or at no cost credentials, degrees for attending higher education. So I'm not gonna get into it, but they have gone through, and they've got a calculation as to what they consider part of the major areas of focus. They want to go ahead and make sure that there's a return on investment for the student after a period of time. FAST also provides fundings to colleges and other public institutions so that they can offer the dual-credit courses to disadvantaged students at no cost to the student. And as I mentioned before, that includes books, supplies, and other course materials. And then educationally disadvantaged students are eligible for the, well, this is the definition for educationally disadvantaged students. They're students who are eligible for National Free and Reduced Lunch Program in any one of four schools prior to the academic school where they're taking the dual credit. So there's a true opportunity for dual-credit students to take advantage of higher ed programs within FAST. The tuition rate, as I mentioned, it may be recalculated, or at least it will be considered on an annual basis. That was from the Higher Recording Board. The current rate for any student who is educationally disadvantaged is at no charge, zero cost to them. For the dual-credit student that is not eligible for FAST, the tuition rate is $55. And then that would include the cost of the books, supplies, and other course materials. And I did give a list of, there are several other schools within the area who are participating in FAST as of spring 24. So some of the benefits of FAST, more students can participate in dual-credit courses because the overall cost is less. Overall tuition for the ISDs, for dual-credit students is lower. FAST-eligible students can take dual-credit courses at no cost, as I mentioned, including the tuition, books, fees, and educational materials. And then they certainly have the opportunity to earn a certificate, credential, degree at no or substantially reduced cost. So CTC does plan to participate in the FAST program beginning fall of 2024. So I wanted to just give you, this is just a quick example of what the impact will be to the college by participating in FAST. So as you can see, and I pulled some numbers from the '22-'23 year, the total number of dual-credit students we had was 2376. You can see the total number of enrollments, and then the semester credit hours. The FAST calculation, our current tuition rate is 105 per semester credit hour. The tuition under FAST would then be 55, so we took the delta of the $50, just multiplied it by the total semester credit hours, and, you know, that gives you what the potential delta to the college will be. On the flip side of that, the second set of numbers represents the potential opportunity for the college. You can see, and I just pulled some numbers from early college high school, this doesn't incorporate all dual-credit throughout the entire community and service area. This is just a snapshot for early college high school. We had approximately 263 students that had achieved 15 semester credit hours. Each one of those would be eligible for $1,700. And then you had any student who will be graduating, there's an additional $3,500. So when you add those numbers together, there's a slight delta, but I think there's certainly an opportunity for us as a college to really focus on pathways, to focus on moving students from along a degree plan in order to get a certificate or a college degree. And there is certainly a benefit to us being able to do that. So the last slide, and then we can open it up for questions, is just some of the major strategic priorities that we have been in the middle of and working on. The main thing is really increasing enrollments, retention, graduation, and completion rates. I mean, that's, that's kind of where it all ends up. You know, the more students we can enroll, the more students that we can retain, then there's a greater opportunity that we can go ahead and get them to graduation or some type of certificate or completion of a, of some other type of credential or a license. And so there's a number of things that we're actively working on to go ahead and try to do that. One of those is the website redesign and marketing strategy. We've got a customer relationship management software. We've got the onboarding experience. Certainly, that I think goes in hand with student satisfaction and the implementation of success coaches. A number of other schools have done that or have had that in place at great success. The development of new programs within the career and technical education field, workforce training, continuing ed. There's a, I will say, there's a great opportunity within the continuing education area for us to capture those students, to really develop plans and relationships, partnerships with our business partners, with industry within the local community, and in doing so, to provide those individuals with certificates that are of value to the businesses in the area. Certainly, we want to continue looking at growing or eliminating rule enrollment programs. Use of open education or resources and inclusive access. This is something that will certainly bring the cost of the overall cost of getting an education down, because if the books don't cost as much, or we can get it at no cost to them, then that's going to be a huge benefit to the students as well as ISDs. We want to continue to invest in our faculty and staff, continue investing in new existing facilities. I think you're all familiar that we do have a facilities master plan, which lays out improvements that we want to make. We will be going back and taking a fresh look at that and seeing, you know, how we need to align that plan with the focus around House Bill Eight. And then continue to invest in local partnerships, our ISD community, as well as business partners. So a lot of information there. But let me go ahead and open it up to questions, if there are any, and...
Lot of information, but well presented, Mark. Did a good job with making this. At least, we know now how to find the answers to our questions by looking through this. Wes?
It appears to me that the state legislature, again, has ignored the mandatory offsets that we have to eat, the unmunted band-aids that they put on us, like 100% disabled veterans' tuition, I mean, property tax, and all those kinds of things, again, have been ignored even in this revision. So we're still, in this particular neighborhood, we're starting out at disadvantage to some of the other community colleges that don't have the number of disabled veterans that we have in this community, which is highest in the state of Texas, as I understand it. So I don't know why they keep doing that to us, but it's something that we need to do to put pressure on our local congressmen and state representatives to remember us and those kinds of things.
Completely agree. We have had conversations with, with some of the local representatives about the overall impact, but I absolutely agree, you know, the more that we can continue to go ahead and remind them that this is adversely impacting the college, I think would only potentially help us. You know, a number of them, I think the second, when we were talking earlier today, I think San Antonio is certainly an area with, you know, a large military population. The one thing about San Antonio is you have an extremely large tax base. And so when you have a tax base like Austin or Houston Community College or Alamo or something like that, that can certainly go a long ways in helping to offset that. We're not in that type of, in the same situation, and so it unfortunately adversely affects us a little bit more than some of those other schools.
Good job, Mark.
Very well done. Maria?
I would like to see us review this, not just today and our next, at our next meeting, a continuous, even if it's, you have to take 10 minutes every meeting. I just think this needs to be in the forefront all the time, because we need to be reminded the challenges that we face. And I think sometimes we go, we, I can only speak for me, go through life just thinking everything is just okay, is okay. And you guys probably keep a lot of the craziness you're dealing with and the worry that you have from us in some instances. So I just would like to be reminded, if possible, maybe every other month or some schedule that you and the chancellor decide on. But I don't think this is something we can just put in the drawer and say, we'll review it next year.
Right. The timing of it, we've been having conversations, because we're actually starting the budget process within the college, starting to go ahead and gather some information. But this is a major component of that that we need to get back. They're not at a position yet to be able to tell us what that projected funding is going to look like. We've been going ahead and pulling information to try to, you know, share with them, and then to go ahead and look at it ourselves. I think, I think for me, this is certainly going to open up broader conversations around how we approach, you know, how we look at the, you know, the revenue side, as well as how we look at the overall cost side. And, you know, I mean, I think we've done a really good job in the past of continuing, and I'm working on our SACH report, so I've seen, you know, the information of continuing to, you know, reduce our expenses in line with enrollments as they've continued to drop. But I think we're at a point with this where the state is saying, hey, you've got opportunity over here, where we're gonna have to look at what do we do to reinvest in some of those areas? What do we do to reinvest in programs? What do we do to reinvest in areas that we believe will give us success as we, you know, proceed with this model? And so that's, I think, certainly something that we can, we will definitely have more conversation about.
And I'd like to see, also, I mean, you may have already done this, is to share this with our instructors along the way, because just like when a patient enters a hospital, they start the discharge planning that day. They know what they want the outcome to be. And I think we have to do that for our college students also. Have a plan, make sure they're on the plan, someone is directing them, so that they can complete whatever it is they desire, a certificate or a degree or whatever. Did I say something wrong?
No, no, it's actually, it's in line with, it's in line with what we have been talking about in what's ready. So I don't want to, I'll let Dr. Garrett talk.
So I thought maybe I said something.
I called in to help.
I called in to help.
You just said the four pillars of the Texas Success Initiative. We're involved with Texas Pathways. We've been involved with Texas Pathways for a number of years, and the pillars all align with what you said, getting a student on a path, making sure they stay on the path, doing all the supports needed to get them through the path and into completion. And we've been working on that for years, and we continue to develop new ways to help that. We've developed a brand-new visual aid that we're going to implement. We have, we have pathways on our website right now, but we've developed a brand-new one that's going to be even clearer to not only show them how to go from a certificate through a degree, but what they can get at each level as far as income. So it's a wonderful tool, and we're going to do that for each and every one of our programs. But it's all about getting a student in and helping them succeed throughout their journey at Central Texas College, and we're hoping to do that with many, many initiatives that we're working on with the chancellor and other areas.
And so many of our students will never know the value of that or have access to that, and us, we give it to them.
And we have plans for that.
They won't have that outside of us doing what we're supposed to do. So it's just, I mean, even talking to the counselors at the high school to make sure that they have, one of your staff members brought a few, maybe a year or so ago, an outstanding catalog that showed the courses that were acquired for all the different programs that students have access to. I know, I went, I attended a community college 100 years ago, but the way I took that catalog, I decided what I wanted to do. I looked at that catalog, and I took nothing that wasn't listed. And that's why I graduated in a year and a half. But I just made sure that I took those courses, so, and I had supportive family, but a lot of our students won't have that. So I think we have an even greater responsibility to help them to get a certificate so they can be taxpayers.
Exactly. Exactly. And support their families. Move forward.
And contributors to Alumni Association.
There you go.
Has House Bill 8 changed the way we track our students, or do we need to improve the way we track our students?
So I think there's certainly going to be some opportunities, and as we had talked before, because of the population we've had, we've made a lot of customizations to our IT systems. And I think one of the, one of the challenges is how do we make sure that we are able to extract that information in a timely manner so that we can do some assessments and data analysis and stuff? You know, there may be some outside programs, some outside software who could potentially assist, where it could potentially assist us. We just have to work through some of the customizations, but I think absolutely, I think our intent is to determine what programs are growing, where we can continue to grow programs, how we need to reinvest in those programs, and you have to have access to data to be able to go ahead and do that and know that, hey, I'm being successful at what we're trying to accomplish. And if for some reason there are programs that, you know, we're not able, students aren't interested in, then we need to consider, is it something that we should basically stop and then take those resources and reinvest it in something that, you know, they are interested in?
And one last, one last comment on that is, a few years ago, I asked about, about the programs, if they are successful, how do we determine if they are successful? And I don't know if we ever came to any conclusion. I think the feedback was, all the ones we had were successful. Well, we know that can't be, 100%, all of them can't be, have been successful. Or we wouldn't be having the conversation we're having today. So I would like to see us take a look at those programs and possibly eliminating some of those that haven't been successful. I mean, we've added a few, since I've been on the board, we've added a few because someone showed us a presentation that there was a need and that they could fill the classes. But we never need to, we can't just stop looking at what's being successful day-to-day and what is not successful and should be removed.
Agree 110%. I don't know. Do you want to? I mean...
As Dr. Garrett approaches, thank you for that, Mrs. Coley. A couple of months ago, I had a meeting with some of our leadership, because our program portfolio is key, and now more than ever, it is critical. So our deans, our instructional deans, are looking at those programs. I'll hand it over to Dr. Garrett, but she ran a report that gives us a five-year historical or look at the completions.
Yeah, I'm going to give credit to Dr. Welsh and Doug Bustle, and Mr. Doug Bustle for running that report for me, but it does, it gives us a five-year view of our completers in each of our certificates and degree programs, and that is what the deans are now analyzing to look at successful programs. The coordinating board does give us a bird's-eye view of low-producing programs on an annual basis, but that rolls all the programs up into what's called a program-level SIP. So we've been, we haven't been on a low-producing program list in a long time. We had one IT program that we had already closed show up, which was an error on their part, but I didn't say that. But the, we are looking at this five-year list and evaluating that. Thank you.
And I think one of the things you're going to see is you're going to end up seeing potentially more and more programs being brought forward, where we feel like there's opportunity, whether it's working with a business partner, developing or expanding, you know, certificates and potential degree opportunities. We realize that, you know, there's a lot of change that's occurring within the state of Texas, especially around the Austin area, and I think it's going to be on us to see what we can do to continue to adjust and be able to take advantage of that.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Mr. Ryan, you have a report for us?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Towers, Chair, District Board Members, Dr. Carter, Chancellor. I do want to take a moment to plug for law enforcement, okay? So we need to put that skill program up there, because there's a high demand to fill all our positions in the state of Texas, and we just, we don't have enough bodies. I mean, this is policing not only in Texas, but also in America, so we need more police officers. That's my plug for law enforcement. More cops on the streets. So I'm here to present the racial profiling annual report as required by the Texas Occupation Code. We're supposed to get data and do analysis with that information based on the Code of Criminal Procedure, Articles 2.131 through 134. So part of that statutory report also includes a comparative analysis being made and evaluation of all our motor vehicle contacts. That's every motor vehicle stop that we've made. And then my job as the chief administrator is to submit this report to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and also to present my findings to the governing board, my reason I'm here today. So for 2023, we had a total of 148 motor vehicle contacts. Of those 148 contacts, 72 were female, 76 were male. When we break it down by race or ethnicity, we had five Asian Pacific Islanders, we had 59 blacks, 45 whites, and 39 Hispanic or Latino contacts. The reason for our stops, in other words, we have to have a reason to pull somebody over, we can't just stop somebody. The reason for our stops is our moving traffic violations. We had 135 of the 148 were for moving violations, traffic violations. That's 91.22% of why we stopped. So in other words, they ran a stop sign, they were speeding, they were committing some type of traffic violation. Only a small percentage were for vehicle traffic violations, for example, expired registration, things like that. So only 8% of that, little more than 8%. So after we made contact with the 148 contacts, motor vehicle contacts, we, I look at what happens after that. And basically, what we did is that 124 of them received written warnings. That's 83%, almost 84% received a written warning. In other words, there was no fine, no penalty, nothing was assessed on that. Of those 148, 23 did receive citations. That's equivalent to 15.54%. And we made one arrest. One arrest was for an outstanding warrant, so apparently the motorists were stopped, ran for warrants, and that individual came back with two warrants for driving while licensed, suspended, and failure to appear, a warrant that was issued out of Belton Police Department. So all the 148 contacts, there was no physical force using any of the traffic stops, motor vehicle stops, and we had no racial profiling complaints against any of the officers based on those motor vehicle contacts. One of the things that we're required by law is to also have a policy, a written policy prohibiting any type of racial profiling. We are in compliance with that article, and we do have a policy 500-28 under our general orders. Our officers are also in full compliance. They've received training, as a matter of fact, they all received training this last couple of weeks, that I want to make sure they got it, they received it, they took it and printed out their certificates, and I want to make sure they did. So one of the things that we're looking at when we talk about diversity in communities and, I've been in policing quite a while, so we talk about, back then it was culture awareness, culture diversity. Now, now we're talking about cultural humility, the things that we have to do when we serve the public. It requires humility and how we can de-escalate, how we can make those contacts positive, you know, because we need to also be humble. But we also teach the public the same thing. They must also, in humility, understand our role as law enforcement. So that's part of the training that we're doing now as far as that, so. And we do provide the education and youth student orientation as far as if they, anyone is stopped, how to give a compliment or a complaint against an officer. Our policy is also on our web, and each citation that we issue has QR code, that it will take them straight to our policy and how, if they want to file any type of complaint or compliment, they can do that. So we have complied accordance with the Code of Criminal Procedure as far as our policy, the college district. As a chief administrator, I have performed the data audit and then also did the analysis report. And finally, the comparative analysis of all and evaluation revealed no evidence of racial profiling occurring amongst our officers. And with that, that is short and sweet. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? I take it from your presentation, you're feeling good about our...
Yes, I am. I like the fact that we do give a lot of written warnings and, you know, because our job is to educate, hey, you're speeding, slow down, especially here in, our speeding is 25 miles per hour, so people have to get used to that 25 miles per hour, so. And I think all of us here know that sometimes we don't do that, so.
All of us.
But we're good. We're good.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you all. Good job.
Mr. Anderson, you have a recommendation for us?
I'm here to ask approval for chiller replacement of the Fort Cavasus Classroom Building. The air cooler chiller at Fort Cavasus Classroom Building is failing and in need of replacement. The classroom building was built in 2009 and has an air-cooled chiller that is original to the building and only, and the only cooling source for the building. The chiller has required amount, more amounts of investments to keep it operational. The unit is near the end of its life, useful life, 15 to 20 years. The new unit will be covered under warranty and have the ability to upgrade to a more energy-efficient chiller that will require less maintenance, more reliability, reliable, and provide comfort to the learning environment for our students. CTC administration recommends the contract be awarded to Texas Air Systems. Unit is, oh, I'm sorry, in the amount not to exceed $177,470, including 5% contingency for the replacement of the air cooler chiller at 3200 Fort Cavasus Classroom Building. Funding is available within the current fiscal year capital budget. Questions?
Questions, comments? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Spason, you have two recommendations for us to consider.
I do. Good afternoon, Chancellor Carter, Chairman Towers, Board of Trustees. On behalf of the CTC Foundation, I present two nominees for membership appointment to the CTC Foundation Board. Each of the candidate has completed a nomination application and was submitted to the nomination chair, Dr. Jim Anderson. The applications were then presented to the nominating committee for review and approval. The approval from the nomination committee was then submitted to the CTC Foundation Board for approval, and at the last CTC Foundation meeting held on Thursday, January 25th of 2024, the board approved the nominees. The first nominee is Mr. Peter Baroneo. He's a local resident and an owner of Baroneo Wealth Planning in Colleen. He's a graduate of the University of Mary-Hardan Baylor, where he studied business with an emphasis in accounting. In addition to his extensive business background, he is passionate about service in the community. Mr. Baroneo currently serves as the foundation board member and member of the Industry Advisory Council for Texas A&amp;M, Central Texas. He's the current Chair of Business Development and Military Relations for the Colleen Chamber of Commerce. He serves as a current board member for Central Texas Fort Cavasus AUSA. He also was the previous program chair for three years for the Temple Rotary Club. The second nominee is Ms. Becky Isbell. Ms. Isbell is originally from southeastern Oklahoma, and for the past 15 years, a proud resident of Colleen. She is also a business owner. Her and her husband James are the owner of Isbell's Maintenance and Construction and Isbell Rentals. She is a believer that education extends beyond the classroom in which she learned as a young child from her father. She quotes in her bio as stating, "Never stop learning, and your education is a treasure no one can take from you." Never stop, she is strong supporter of the community and being a large part of the future of our children. Her community service efforts include serving the past 14 years as a member and most recently the club president of the Colleen Heights Rotary Club. She sits as a board member of the Hockerhedge Chamber of Commerce and the Oak Creek Academy School. She and her husband, they have three adult children and one grandchild. I thank you for providing me the time to present these wonderful individuals on behalf of the CTC Foundation Board. We believe they will be true assets to our board. Does anyone have any questions about the nominees?
And you'll present these for approval next meeting?
I will, yes.
Questions, comments?
Okay, great. Thank you.
I thought you had something about Clemens Boys and Girls Club.
Yes, sir. In accordance with our, the college's sponsorship policy, the administration is recommending support for the Boys and Girls Club's Diamond Jubilee Celebration, their 60th celebration, which will be held March 22nd at the Colleen Civic and Conference Center. We were approached to be a Pearl sponsorship, and that dollar amount is $3,000. In accordance with the policy, anything over $2,500, we must bring to the board for approval.
Questions, comments on that? We'll receive that for approval next week. It is currently 1:49, and the board will go into executive session under the personal, personnel exception and Government Code 551.074 to discuss the trustee placed number four vacancy. four vacancy.[596.70] By way of announcement, the board has started the process of determining methodology for identifying a replacement for Mr. Bibby's position on the board and further information will come. The time that we've come back from executive session is 2:12. The next item on the agenda is a reminder of our recommendation of topics for meeting board member. Ms. Collins?
Of just the ones that I mentioned earlier that I would like to see returned. I was an old, I was a guidance counselor in another life. So that the student process is really important to me.
Charles?
Early voting starts today.
That's where everybody else is that's not here today. Hers?
Nothing, just to keep up to date on the MOUs for the ISDs.